The microphones are going live soon. Are we ready to get this one in?
Yes, I am.
Sure. Thank you for accepting your responsibilities today.
Thank you so much.
All right, raise your right hand. I, Edward Wilson.
I, Edward Wilson.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I obey the Constitution.
that I obey the Constitution.
and laws.
and laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and the state of Ohio.
I will in all respect.
I will in all respect.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter.
of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
and faithfully discharge.
and faithfully discharge.
the duties.
the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of city clerk.
of city clerk.
of the city of Hamilton.
of the city of Hamilton.
as acting city clerk.
acting city clerk.
Great.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
He's a great guy.
All right. You have a sign too.
Of course. Thank you so much. Can you catch? Thanks again very much, Mayor Mueller, City Council. It is sixty six oh four P M. The recorders are on. The microphones are live, both in the chambers as well as in the lobby. I do believe we're ready to begin, sir.
Go call, please.
Certainly, sir. Mueller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab. And Lauer.
Present.
Okay. Here's a motion to excuse Councilmember Nab for reasons known to City Council.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried to excuse him. We're going to have an offering of prayer by Councilmember Michael Ryan, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Lord, let us live each day in the most loving ways, the God-conscious ways. Let us serve all who are in need, regardless of race, color, or creed. Please continue to guide our city, our city council, and our management teams. Please continue to protect our police officers and firefighters and keep them out of harm's way. And please continue to bless our city, our state, and our country. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now go to special presentations. And the first one, do you want to introduce that?
Certainly, sir. We have Go Green Hamilton by Mr. Jeff Gambrell. It's a Hamilton food system assessment program.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of some great organizations for a project that I'm very passionate about.
One second, please.
So I'm actually here, my name is Jeff Gambrell. I'm representing a few organizations today. I'm the volunteer services and community engagement manager for Serve City over on East Avenue. And I'm also here representing Go Green Hamilton, which is a subcommittee of the Healthy Hamilton Coalition. We are working together to do a comprehensive report. It is called the Hamilton Food System Assessment. All right, so first off, what is a food system? This is a term all of us have probably heard about, whether it being a fourth grade science class. But a food system is basically all the inputs and outputs required in order to get food from farm to table, and all the steps in between. This is very important to know for our community because it greatly impacts the availability of healthy food for our community, whether our folks are getting enough food or if they're not getting the right kind of food. So this is definitely a very important project. And what a food system assessment is, is it's just exactly how it sounds. It is an assessment over what our community's food system looks like. They look at four key areas, one being nutrition and food security. So like I said, how much food is coming in, if there's enough to support our population, and if it is the right kind of balanced food to support our raising, our aging kids. The second one is economic well-being. Third is territorial equity, and that really focuses on partly placement of grocery stores within a community, making sure that it's equitable for all populations to access. And then the fourth is environmental protection. So what impacts we are having on our local, on our local environment, and how that, you know, could be detrimental to its health. So the main goal of a food system assessment is to improve a community's food system via increased access to healthy food. And we'll go into here on the next slide more of what we're, how we're going about doing this. So let's talk about actually some of the key stakeholders that are involved in this project. In order to make sure that we're being very thoughtful with how we're executing this project, we wanted to make sure we had all of the right community agencies involved in it. So you can see there a list of all the organizations. The city of Hamilton has been very beneficial to this, this project as well. Cindy Hug with the Health Department, she is serving on our steering committee. Liz Hayden has also been a huge asset to this project, working with the G I S department to get locations of grocery stores and convenience stores within our community. And they're actually working together to identify what convenience stores are offering healthy produce options versus which ones are, aren't. And that's really going to help us with our final report. The Hamilton City Schools District as long, as well as Miami University Hamilton. Both of them, we have both a staff and student representative that are helping with this project. Like I said, we want to make sure that we have the correct representation for this project. Hamilton Urban Gardens, Michelle Merritt, she's actually acting as an advisor to our organization. She's not able to serve on the steering committee itself due to other obligations, but she is advising us moving forward on how best to perform this project. And so now really getting into the meat and bones of what a food system assessment is. What you see in front of you are flyers, one in English, one in Spanish. The first phase of the project, we're focusing on doing a community survey. So this survey went live probably about two months ago. And what we're trying to do is encourage every resident of the city of Hamilton to take part in this survey. The thing I'll note is it's anonymous. We're not asking any personal information such as names or email addresses or addresses. We are asking what neighborhood within the city you resided, and we do provide assistance with that for those who may not be aware of what neighborhood. So we have mapping included with that survey. And we're asking just some basic demographic questions as well, you know, household income. But really, the meat and bones of the survey is focused on whether or not healthy food is affordable for their households, whether or not an individual may be interested in free cooking classes or community gardens or things like that to help support them to get the nutrition that every household deserves. And the thing that I can't stress enough is the affordability of healthy food is affecting everybody. It doesn't have to just be low income or homeless neighbors. It could be the working-class family. We've seen over the years inflation continue to rise. It's negatively impacting healthy food, which we know already ahead of time was not very affordable versus, you know, going and buying your hamburger helper, you know, which is, which can go further in feeding a family. But we just really want to get a sense of what percent of our community is seeing the impacts of this and are unfortunately making those difficult choices to choose between produce and fresh meat versus, you know, the prepackaged meals that are high in sodium and sugar and things that are not great for their diets. Those flyers we have out all over the community. We've shared them with several community agencies. We've been going to neighborhood meetings. We've been in contact with neighborhood leads for all the neighborhood organizations. We've, we've spoken to at least three of them at this point, including the Seventeen Strong Advisory Board. We also have that same information here on business cards that we've been going around. And this is very handy when going out to community events to be able to just hand, hand this out to folks. And it's super simple. They can either use the Q R code or there's a shortened U R L. So either one of them will take that to the appropriate link. And as I mentioned, with the flyers being in English and Spanish, based on which flyer they're scanning, we, we do have the surveys in Spanish as well to reach a broader, broader population. But the reason why we feel that it's essential to do this project is it really boils down to, we know that there's issues with food insecurity, not just in the city of Hamilton. This is a nationwide issue. And we also know that there are funding options out there, both private and public, in millions of dollars. But in order to access those grants, we have to have the data to back it up. And I know that that's especially why the Health Department, you know, is really interested in seeing this project be successful. Because at the end of the day, regardless of what political party you might be affiliated with, those funds are available. And, you know, me personally, I would like to see that come to our community and support our neighbors than go somewhere else. So that's why I'm really passionate about this. I encourage everyone to take a, take a moment to do the survey. You can do it in eight minutes or less. It's twenty-five questions. Real quickly, what I'll say is after Phase One, another project we're going to do with the food system assessment is do more focus group sessions, go into different, different gatherings throughout the city and inviting neighbors in to do more of an open house style dialogue discussion on, on, you know, how that really impacts them and their families more personally. And we're calling those sessions Food for Thoughts. And so in, in return for them giving their thoughts, we're going to be providing a meal for them there. So that's, that's Phase Two, after we've completed the surveys. The survey will remain open until the end of the year. And we're hoping first quarter 2025 to have a final report. And we would love to be able to come back and give that presentation to council once it's ready. All right, so I think I pretty much covered the basics of what the food system assessment is, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions council may have.
I just want to say thank you for including Hugs and G Foods in that. Are you planning to put the cards or see if you can put the cards out of customer service out front? And maybe in utility customer service? Could we do something like that possibly?
I'd be happy to provide them, yes, absolutely.
With the city folks, and I think it's a great assessment and things that we need to know about.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Jeff, this is great, and it, I would really be interested in knowing more about it. We just had this discussion, I belong to a group, Family Promise, and we host homeless families over at Dot's House. And we were just talking about the meals that are prepared and how we really do need to be keying into something that is more healthy instead of just taking the easy way of what they may like. So I really would appreciate if I could sit down and meet with you on this. And then either you or Ed, whoever could send that PowerPoint to all of council so that we can review it, I'd appreciate that too, please.
Yeah, absolutely, and.
That can be done.
And unfortunately, you mentioned the meals not always being the healthiest. Oftentimes, the food that you get from food pantries or food banks are not the highest quality nutrition that families need. It's just really sustenance to, to help support them. But we really are hoping to expand healthy options in our community, whether that be identifying convenience stores in the area that we could do kind of pop-up, fresh produce on certain days. One of the big things we see is just accessibility and affordability. So a person, you know, even if they're able to afford it, it may not be within walking distance of, of their residence if they don't own a car. So we're evaluating a lot of aspects with this survey.
The biggest thing I noticed, like with Family Promise, our meal teams fix fantastic, good meals, which a lot of kids don't eat because they, we just have a captive audience to maybe to be able to talk to some of these families and explain it. So we can talk later if that's okay.
Yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Other questions or comments?
I did have some printouts of Slide Four variation of it available as people were entering. So if they're, they're still around, people can pick those up.
All right, awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, next we have the 2024 Forbes Under Thirty Summit, Service Summit, by Mr. Dan Bates, I believe, or do we have somebody else from Marshall School for that?
Yes, you have me.
Excellent.
proxy for our director, Kelvin Moss.
Excellent.
So greetings to the mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers and the guests in the chamber. Okay, we extend our heartfelt greetings and gratitude for the opportunity to induce you to the Marshall High School, Hamilton campus. Now, look, my background, I spent five decades as a journalist. I've only been in education for a year, and I'm excited about what we're doing at Marshall. And my antennas went up when I was asked, hey, would you want to come to a charter school? You can imagine all the sort of the publicity, good and bad, that charter schools receive. But at Marshall, we do something unique. We specialize in dropout prevention, academic credit recovery, and career technical education, which includes business and entrepreneurship, construction, culinary, healthcare, and manufacturing. So here are the numbers. We ended our first year in June with three hundred and forty-five students. Now, when I get hired, Mr. Moss says, your first year, you're going to have sixty-five students. Again, three hundred and forty-five students in our first year, outstanding. Now, this year, we're on pace to exceed that and go to three hundred and seventy-five. Right now, our current enrollment is at two hundred and seventy-five students, and we grow weekly. We educate students between the ages of fifteen and twenty-one. And our students' home districts include the following: Hamilton, which we have a binding relationship with, city schools; Fairfield, Ross, Talawanda, Lakota, Monroe, New Miami, Purple Shawnee, Bellbrook and Dayton, Middletown, Baton, as well as students transferring from online schools, other charter schools, and both out-of-state and out-of-country school districts. Now, we're here just to kind of give you a quick overview of our participation in the 2024 Forbes Under Thirty Summit Cincinnati. It runs from September the twenty-second to the twenty-fifth, and it's throughout greater Cincinnati, and includes both live and virtual sessions and events. So this year's, some of the world's top young leaders, founders and creators are participating in this event in Cincinnati, where they will experience the opportunities to connect, learn, and grow during the Forbes Thirty Under Thirty Summit. Now, the press release that Mr. Moss and I drafted a couple of weeks ago is out there in front. So if you got a chance, you can take a look at that. It has all the details about our times and events. But here's how Forbes describes this summit. Of course, this is, experience a dynamic program featuring a private concert, star-studded speakers, exclusive networking sessions, industry, industry-focused excursions, local culinary ventures, a legendary bar crawl, and a day of giving back to the community. This isn't just a summit, it's a chance to be part of excellence. So Marshall, the Marshall High School, Hamilton campus, has been selected as one of the sites for the Under Thirty Service Day, which is on September the twenty-fifth. So it's a half-day of service and mentorship. So now, we're working with Forbes sort of to give us a final group of volunteers and participants that will be at our school that day. But look, this is a tremendous opportunity and occasion for our school, not just for us, but also for our school organization, Oakmont Education, and for the Hamilton community. It's the second year that Oakmont School has participated. Last year, the, our sister school, Frederick Douglass High School in Cleveland, was selected for the Under Thirty Service Day. Look, this service day also is going to raise Marshall Hamilton's profile nationally with all the people that are going to be coming to our campus for the day. Just a quick thing, just to give you an overview, our program runs from, again, this is outside, ten to one. But the, the fun thing is this, Shark Tank. So we came up with this content, this concept that how can we engage these leaders, these young leaders, to engage our students? And so we developed, strategized Shark Tank. Again, it's out there, but I'll just read sort of an overview. It runs from ten thirty to twelve. And it, it's, the selected entrepreneurial-minded students will pitch to the Sharks, who are comprised of a panel of the Forbes Under Thirty Summit leaders. This Shark Tank-style challenge is designed to reward big ideas and inspire students' creativity that will push the envelope. We will encourage the participating students to be bold. The students will focus on innovation, something fresh and new, building or, building on or evolving from previous models, solving a problem, reinventing the model entirely, or taking us somewhere with a product or concept that we didn't knew, know existed. The most innovative winner in turn gets an opportunity to be mentored for the remainder of the school year by the Shark, who was intrigued by the students' pitches. And right now, we're coming up with between six or seven concepts, and we're invite, involving our entire student body to be part of this, and then we'll select that. Lastly, I want to say that council, you are invited to attend. I have some invitations which I'll give to the. Our luncheon in particular, you can come from twelve to one. If you can be available from, from ten to, ten thirty to twelve to see the Shark presentation. There'll be some breakout sessions, the students will work with the Sharks to, to make sure that their presentations are sharp, to an on-point. You can also network and meet, meet our guests. And then we'll have a luncheon. And our lunch is going to be provided by a mobile caterer called Off the Hooks Catering, which is owned by Leroy Hook. The special thing is that the appetizers, desserts, and specialty drinks will be catered by our Marshall High School students in our culinary program, and they're wonderful. We actually kicked that off on September the ninth, our career tech curriculum. Again, we just thank you for the opportunity. Please, if you haven't come by, see our school. I know that sometimes when you walk, we drive by, it may not look appealing on the outside, but when you come in, it is, it's really, really outstanding building. We have one student who walked out of the bathroom, and she looked at me and she said, man, you guys are rich. And I said, well, we're rich in love, we're rich in support, but most importantly, we're rich in making sure that you guys are successful. Again, welcome, any questions that you have? Grateful for the opportunity to share with our story.
Comments, questions?
Mayor.
Please.
I'm familiar with the Marshall School and as a teacher in Hamilton, I do, I do know the students that you take in. It is a great service to Hamilton City Schools as well as those students that you serve. I'm also familiar with Mr. Moss and his family. And I believe that the foundation is built on the people that he has hired. I do know most of the people that he has hired. And I support your program a hundred percent and believe in Mr. Moss's message and hope that you guys are as successful as can be. I wish you the best.
Oh, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you for educating us, educating and challenging students. It's like a great challenge for them to be creative and to speak in front of others and impress other people.
And the Shark Tank Challenge doesn't just stop with them. If anyone else in the audience wants to come and participate, if not from September twenty-fifth, anytime, we welcome and support your involvement in our, our mission. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a comment to the, first of all, thank you. I can't, it's been a year already since I came there and we had the opening.
Yeah.
And you, you made a great comment, because when I first pulled up in the parking lot, I'm saying, this is an old grocery store and strip mall. And when I walked in, being a product, I told you I was a product of D. Russell Lee, which is Butler Tech. And, you know, I thought at that time that was a pretty nice school, but I walked in, I was just blown away. And the desserts looked really good. I didn't eat one, but they looked really good. But everything, walked around and the students were just, you could tell there was a lot of smiles on their faces. The, the rooms, all your programs are top-notch. I have not got back there to visit it, but I am going to be there for this one. And you're right, when you drive by it, don't judge a book by its cover, because this is a beautiful place inside. I think Kelvin probably would take you a tour if you stopped by and said, I really want to see this as a citizen. I don't think you would have a problem with that, but great job.
And I should say that in our first year, again, we were supposed to have sixty-five students. We graduated forty-six students, so. And we have two who are working on college, three actually working on college. So we are delivering and grateful to have the opportunity to be here.
And they're, they're, it's, it's a nice program, and I'm glad you're doing it. And I know you're going to succeed because your heart's in it.
Thank you.
So can't wait to see it.
All right, thank you, thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, that takes care of special presentations. Now go to the audience of citizens, part of the agenda. Individuals who wish to make comments may speak during this part of the agenda. We reserve the right to speak specifically when Adam is up for vote on our council floor. You're required to sign this public speaking book, and each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. And Jim LaHodeman, you are first. You wish to speak this evening, Jim? You signed the book, do you want to speak this evening?
Okay. This bus system in Hamilton is really bad. I mean, I was over on High Street in Cardiff, find these stop signs for the buses. At all. The windows are, I saw the street behind that where the bridges, they're all so small, you can't see them hardly. Buses, bus system. And it costs five bucks for a ride on some of the buses. That's more than Cincinnati charges.
How much does Cincinnati charge?
Two bucks, I think it's the most.
So you'd like to see the bus system be improved?
Very much so.
Okay.
Because my, my car died and I can't, you know, transportation now.
I think the B C R T A is open to all kinds of ideas and suggestions now, so. I'll say, I'll, I'll pass along what you said tonight, okay?
Thank you.
All right, Jim, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night to you. Mr. Goodman, you already spoke, I believe, about the summit, so. Greg Erwin?
My name is Greg Erwin from four fifty-one Emerson Avenue. Happy eight twenty-eight, it's my favorite day of the year. I'm here just to kind of clarify and. I'm here just to kind of clarify and ask a few questions, if I can. I'm representing Highland Park. We've had a lot of meetings and members, and as you probably know, on council, we've been, we're very concerned about Airbnbs coming into our community. And so, on, last year, we had a meeting called, it was, I thought it's just good to know this because I know we had a city manager transitioning into this, so it's kind of been a long process. On August 7th a year ago, we had a meeting primarily to discuss the short-term rentals. A lot of people came, and it seemed like very, very different points of view. We started having meetings in Virginia Park, discussing what we could do, and there was this early survey, a lot of people didn't know about it, there's 200 people, and after that survey in 2020, they decided to go forth with the short-term rentals, and people were upset about it. So we started having meetings in the park. They said, "We'll have another survey." And they were very confused, a lot of people are elderly in Highland Park, and we weren't sure what to do. And some people, "Let's do a petition." And I don't know what to do with stuff, I'm pretty inexperienced. And, and so, a council member showed up, and he said, "Look, if you can do the petition and overwhelmingly show that you have support, that's all I need to really see. Don't worry about the survey." And I know you look at the surveys, we were told not to even worry about the second survey. And so, moving forward, we worked on the petition, and we turned the survey in on November 30th, 442 signatures, an overwhelmingly response, 342 homes, about 400 that responded, approximately 85%. We turned that in. Finally, on April 18th, the planning commission listened to us and voted four to one to support Highland Park, Hickory Hills, and the short-term rentals. And we're not sure why these three were all connected. The planning commissions endorsed it four to one. May 8th, came the city council for caucus meeting. May 20th, we had the first reading. June 12th, there was a final meeting vote. For 25 minutes, you discussed, "What are we voting on?" I heard, "I'm not sure what we're voting on." And I, we heard, "The problem was, these three issues are together. Why are these together?" We were told, "Can these come back? Can they be split up?" We were told, "Yes, it wouldn't take that long at all."
May I interrupt one minute? I apologize. Ed, can you set? I don't know if you have.
Yeah, let's set the time. I would like to know where we are, because I don't want to talk too long.
Thank you.
No.
Sorry.
I would appreciate that. Where are we right now? Two or three minutes?
I was going to go ahead and say, "Give four minutes more," and then.
Okay, you know, I would appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Anyway, so, at the meeting, it seemed like there's a lot of confusion at the meeting. I've talked to everybody on council, except for one person. They've responded back positively to leave an email to me and supported it. I, I respect the mayor the most on the council, because you're like the president, you've been here 16 years, and what you said was, "If Highland Park speaks to us," you felt very strongly to listen to us. And you said, "All the other neighborhoods," you hadn't heard, no clamoring from any other ones. At the planning commission, your lawyer said, "That's what I would recommend. Do one, one neighborhood at a time." And the survey was said that absolutely is going to be shaping the next steps for the short-term rentals. We want to be citizen-led, and we thought we had really shown that. And we're just not sure why this didn't come back for a vote. So, just the residents of Highland Park kind of gave up, they're like, "We thought it was voted down." No, it was asked to come back. Now, finally, and I emailed several times, asking, "What is the status? We're in transition, it's the summer." And finally, on August 8th, I was told, "It's not going to come back. We're too busy, we got other priorities we're working on." And it's like, after we went through all this process, and we were told, it just, it never came back, and it's, it's very upsetting to, it just, a lot of people said, "It's politics," but I really look at everybody up here, and, so what we're really concerned about is the long-term effects of Highland Park. And 75085 says, "The short-term rental units shall not adversely affect a residential neighborhood in an adverse way." And we're looking not now, but to the future. Right now, it's not a problem, there's only one or two in inner Highland Park. What we're worried about is 30, 40, 50, or 60. That's what we're really concerned about. And to do nothing, that's what we're worried about, that, so, we really would suggest that you look at this issue again and think about this. I don't, is there possibly even this, like, is there, make any sense to have a subcommittee? Because I've talked to some of you, do you know there's a row of Airbnb houses already running by Marriott Homes and Villas here? Do you know that? There's like four of them here. Most people aren't even aware of what's this, when I've talked to. I mean, I know you guys all work independently, but is there a committee to, maybe a subcommittee to explore this? I don't know. I just want, you know, there's a lot of things that other cities do, and if you're not going to go with the ban, can you consider some of these? I wrote these up, and I would like to give them to you, what other cities are doing. Short-term, less than 30 days rental properties legislation should include restrict quantity of short-term rentals in a neighborhood. If there's one on every block, I guarantee you, it'll start changing. Is it okay to have maybe 60, 80, 100? What if half of them? So, I mean, I would consider some kind of restriction possibly. Restrict concentration of short-term rentals so they are spread out over a neighborhood. You have four in a row in Hickory Woods. Did you know that? The Marriott Homes and Villas require short-term owners to live in a rental unit at least six months out of the year, like Mr. Pullman, next door, I think it is. Impose a sliding scale licensing fee depending on the nature of the owner. Like a Marriott or real estate companies would pay substantially more than local investors possibly. Prohibit, prohibit out-of-state ownership of short-term rentals. Try to focus on helping people here in a sense. Well, I mean, you know, every time there's an Airbnb that goes in, a family can't move in. Your families are really trying to move into Highland Park. Fortunately, the one that moved in next to us, there's 15 people saw it in one day, almost all families. You're keeping families out of neighborhoods when Airbnbs go there. So I would just like to end. When Highland Park became a community, that was before HOA, you can't do that, but they said, "Highland Park, a neighborhood for a successful Hamiltonian to build his dream home." They had a vision. Do you have a vision? Just let it go? I just really would request for you to reconsider this whole issue and possibly think about it, come up with other ideas. I have these that I'd like to give to you later. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman. Great, before you go. Kind of confused, I thought after we got done talking on the phone, and we had a good conversation about this, and, and I told you the way I felt, and told you about how I had, you know, my neighbor that had an Airbnb, but I thought at the end of the phone call, I told you I was for all the restrictions, let's put some stronger restrictions on here. I really don't want to ban them. I told you that myself.
I understand that.
And, you know, I let everybody know that, but I thought we were going to get with Ms. Hayden on this, and that was where we were going to go with this. I mean, you're talking about the restrictions, same thing we talked about on the phone call, and I'm all for that, you know, that we need to have some strict.
Some of these are owner-occupied, limiting regulations as far as parking and that, that's one thing, but we're looking at kind of.
But, but I've got, again, I've got one two doors away from me, and you know that, and I don't want anybody from out of the country or across the, you know, United States owning it. I know who owns it, and I think that's where the restrictions, we have to get to, sit down together. And I told you I would sit on that board with it, and, so I thought that's where we ended it. And, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea to do some restrictions, and, and, Liz, can I ask a quick question? We had, what, a couple of years ago, we had 120-something Airbnbs in town? Is that correct, maybe two or three years ago? Can you remember?
Probably not, we've not probably had that many, we have about 100 licensed.
Okay, what do we have, about 80-something now? It actually went down?
I think so. I, I was just, I'm not positive how many we have, I think it's 96.
And the Airbnbs in Hickory Woods, are those owned by the Marriott?
I, I don't believe they are, but that Marriott.
That's what I understood, you see what I'm saying.
I think Marriott is in the process of buying some, but I believe those are rented out by Airbnbs, Marriott, several.
Greg, I want to correct you, I want to just clarify something. You said there was four houses together.
Yes, sir.
That were owned by Marriott already.
I shouldn't say owned, they're being rented out by Marriott Homes and Villas. That's my understanding. Marriott is also buying homes, what I read.
I would like to find out where those are, if we got those in there, but.
They're the same ones that had been discussed before. The person who owns those is probably, has enough short-term rentals that he is able to list them on Marriott's website.
Okay, so they're not being run by Marriott, they're being, okay, listed on there, but also, isn't the Hickory Woods deal, the HOA taking care of those too?
Correct.
They're actually not going to be there anymore, correct?
The, my, my, it's a, you know, separate from our process, but my understanding is that they, the HOA won in court, is what I think happened.
But bottom line, Greg, you know, if you want to, you want me to sit in the meeting with Liz on these, you know, some tougher guidelines on there, I'm all for that.
And again, restricting or whatever, not carking and loud, I'm just waiting to get back to the Highland Park. We want to write a letter and let them know what's going on, so we're waiting, waiting for those new regulations, they haven't come out yet, and hopefully they will include some of that. We greatly appreciate that.
And I know they've had a lot of, you know, transition around here and everything, but you have been forgotten on it, because we have talked about it. So, and again, like I've always told you, you know me for a long time, you know, you can call me.
You're very, very receptive, and I appreciate that very much.
But, you know, I'll be glad to, you know, talk to you anytime about it, but you know my view on it, and you know what I would like to do out there, so, and I want to help as much as possible.
Just try to do something for our neighborhood. Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
One second, Greg, I just want to say a couple of things. First off, thanks for, for bringing up the Marriott issue, that's an interesting business relationship, however it operates. And thanks for your, for your thoughts. Obviously, short-term rentals is still an issue which, which concerns people, otherwise you wouldn't be here. And the group that, that you speak to and, and share thoughts about, I think we're in a step right now where we're monitoring, observing, seeing what's going on, see if the number goes up, see if the number goes down, see if the hotels that come in may affect the number of short-term rentals. I mean, I'd say, I believe, I know I'm in a monitoring, monitoring type, monitoring type of stage right now, but you have given us some ideas. This is an issue, it's in other cities as well, it's not just in Hamilton.
Yes, sir.
But, really appreciate your thoughts, and let's, your Vice Mayor Pullman speak, so let's continue to share ideas, share numbers, and, and see what we may need to do next.
One size doesn't fit all, and I really appreciate you looking at Highland Park in a, in a different way. We're at the wrong place at the right time with Spooky Nook, and it's just, we're scared a little bit, some of the older folks. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ryan.
Yes.
Greg, I know you and I have been talking a lot, I want you to know, we have some stuff coming out, where I think it's 9/11, this is when we're going to be seeing some things. Is that going to be just in the packages, caucus report?
That probably, I, that will, I'm expecting that to be the first reading in public hearing.
Okay.
I think, but I don't know that for sure, but as soon as we do know, I plan to send an email to all the stakeholders involved. So there will be communication about dates with everybody that we have email addresses for.
So, as, as I said on the phone, we're working on, we're still, we're working on those recommendations, and we're going to have the hearings. If there's something else that we need to talk about, we'll talk about it.
You know, I believe in you guys, a lot of people telling me they're going to screw you around. You guys, I really believe in, and, and I trust you, and I really do feel that way. So, thank you.
Mr. Erwin, before you go, Mr. Mayor, I just want to address, we had a conversation as well.
Yes, we did.
Earlier this week, and, and just for the benefit of the audience and the folks that are at home, the conversation you and I had was that personally, and speaking for the staff, we're incredibly concerned about the character and quality of our neighborhoods, and making sure that we maintain our neighborhoods, especially Highland Park, which is, you know, doing tremendously well. But my recommendation to staff, coming out of the previous hearings, and the vote that was voted down, was to revise the current regulations to ensure that they're effective and enforceable, followed by a 12-month period of monitoring for, for evaluation and to consider any, before we consider any further legislative action. To your point, your concern, as you discussed, as we discussed this week, was not so much now, right? There's no problems now.
Now is no problem.
You're concerned about the future.
Yes, sir.
There's, there's one short-term rental in Highland Park, if you exclude the.
Yes, sir. Right across the street from my house.
Your concern is not so much with one, your concern is with 30, 40, and 50, as you said.
One or two in every block really would change things drastically.
Right. And, and we have the ability to monitor this, to manage this, and, and to react when we see that. What we have seen since 2020, since we've started registering these, is the market has stabilized, and, and I believe that with the addition of increased hotel capacity, which is going to come online here in just a couple of months, that, that the market is going to continue to drive this decision, and, and it's going to continue to steer away from expansion, and certainly to the levels that you're concerned about. But we are all concerned equally with you, and I want your neighbors and other folks in the other neighborhoods in the city to know, this is a divisive issue. There are people on both sides, people who feel very strongly for and against this. So I think these regulations are a smart first step. I think continuing to monitor and evaluate is, is our, it's our process for now.
I'll look forward to seeing the regulations. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Got down Don Dixon next. He wishes to speak now, in the audience of citizens, or during the public hearing?
During the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Darrell Hirschner?
Hello, my name is Darrell Hirschner. Spent 30-some years in Hamilton, and most people have been around Hamilton a few years, you've heard of the Hirschners. Grandma had eight boys, she got the name going. Is that something you can put up, or should I just hold it, or what?
Do we need to share that with council?
I think, Mr. Hirschner, have you shared, let's just do a timeout for just one second, if we could.
Sure.
Have you filed any kind of a claim on this at all?
I, I did file a claim.
Okay.
And I had a call from the lawyer that your company pays for, and she said, "Well, there's nothing we can do."
If this is something that involves litigation, we normally don't have you present your claim to city council.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's a, that's a, it's a different world, and a different room, and a different part.
Let me say this, there's no litigation because they said no, so I'm done, but I just want to say my two cents worth. Can I do that? With no response?
I've got to defer to somebody much smarter than me on that. I've got to ask our law director if this is something that we should be going into at this point in time, because I know you've talked to a lot of people, and I know that we're not supposed to be handling claims. I've got to turn to the law director.
Okay.
And see if we really should be going into this area right now, or maybe later, but maybe not right now, but I've got, I've got to defer to her, and that's, that's what I've got to do, Mr. Hirschner, so, just a second.
It's my understanding there has, has been something submitted from a claim perspective, and the policy typically for council is to not have conversations related to pending claims, so.
As of this time, there may be some time later on, but, but not right now, sir.
Okay, I mean, I've called several council people, and never gotten any back.
And that's.
Nobody got back to me. Oh, one person did.
That's kind of the reason why, your honor. Mr. Hirschner, please. Okay, that takes care of the audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, and that includes all staff reports, all caucus reports, and our information reports, those being July 2024 finance and July 2024 investment reports. We're going to go into the committee of the whole, which allows council to ask questions, provide direction, comment on various things going on within our caucus staff reports. I'll set the motion, the regular meeting being recessed, and the committee of the whole will take place.
Don't move.
Second, which means council member Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Hold on a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing done, the motion is carried at 6:49. We now go into the caucus agenda, committee of the whole, and you want to introduce these, Mr. Acting City Clerk?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. One second, please. Hello, everyone. Ed Wilson, Planning Department and Acting City Clerk, representing these, uh, three islands for brevity, of course. Uh, we do have caucus islands from the Planning Department. Our first one is 48 North Brookwood. It is a preliminary and final PD plan because that property is zone BPD, which is our business plan development. This is also a specific use because the proposal is for a Valvoline, an instant oil change, which would qualify as an automotive repair. Thus, it is a specific use, a conditional use, within a planned development zoning district. The proposing primarily brick for all facades and clapboard siding, as well as articulation on the front, as well as 43% transparency on the front and back, as well as 30% transparency windows on the sides. It is a 1,400 square foot building with two bays. They do have the various requests because our business plan development, uh, regulations do not allow for any visible or right-of-way facing overhead doors. So that's why they're requesting that variance. There's also the subject of various, um, collaborations with staff in order to bring the proposal more into compliance with the code, the result of which is now they've read every single part of the code except for the one variance in question involving the overhead doors. So they've done everything, the landscaping, the perimeter trees and bushes along the property lines, the 900 square foot, uh, rent garden, as well as traffic and parking, and a brick dumpster enclosure to match the building. Their monument sign is also located on the southwest corner and would include landscaping as well. Next, we have North B Street. The right-of-way dedication is actually at Wayne and South Beach, or North B Street. That is actually an item submitted, uh, by our engineering department team, basically one of many items to clean up the right-of-way and make sure it aligns and actually reflects reality that the engineering department has been working on, uh, ever since for the past couple of years. That's a technical dedication plaque, which was included in your packet reports. And then finally, we have South D Street at New London. This is also a dedication plaque. This actually involves a parcel that is in the middle of what is occupied by a portion of that intersection of South D Street and New London, as well as some other right-of-way that should be actually right-of-way versus what athletes referred into the recorded land. So it's basically yet another cleanup by our engineering department that's being submitted as part of this dedication plaque. And the technical plaque was also provided for you as part of your packet reports. Are there any questions of me?
Any questions for Mr. Wilson on those three?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next, we have number four, a recommendation relative to, um, the application for transfer of a D5 or D6 liquor permit to Business and Entertainment Solutions LLC, DBA Tailgaters Sports Bar. We have our Madam Law Director, Alicia Block.
Good evening, Mayor Muller, members of city council, and the citizens of Hamilton. I'm here related to a recommendation to object to a liquor permit transfer. Um, the request is to transfer this to Business and Entertainment Solutions LLC, is doing business as Tailgaters Sports Bar. Um, this city administration has a process to connect with the police department, the fire department, the health department, and the building department, um, to determine whether or not there are grounds under Ohio, uh, law to object to a transfer of a liquor permit. Uh, we also do that for, for new permits as well. Uh, we have received, uh, an objection from the police department, uh, and so this matter will be moving forward for legislation based upon the feedback received from the police department. Any questions about that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a recommendation relative to a request to approve substantial amendments to fiscal year 2022 to 2023, committee development broad grant, CDBG. We have Ms. Tika Hadderton of the Finance Department.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. So I am here this evening presenting on the use of fiscal year 2022 through 2023 CDBG funds that were slated in 2022 for the use of public facilities, and we are now going to continue to use those funds for public facilities, but specifically for the, uh, street resurfacing program and to resurface two lane miles of roadway in low to moderate income areas of the city. The amount will be $148,272. I know this is totally different from the normal list that I have, so that's all I actually have tonight, is just this one amendment. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
No problem.
Next, we have a recommendation relative to a request regarding Bell Avenue and Dixie Highway Project, Dorana Hyatt Project. It's an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Hamilton and Butler County Transportation Improvement District by our engineering director, Alan Messer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Hamilton community. If you remember back in November, you, you voted to resolution to support an application by the Butler County TID for $350,000 for this, uh, Bell Avenue Dixie Highway reconfiguration of the intersection. That application was successful, and so this is an intergovernmental agreement to join with the TID, similar to what we did on Tyler'sville Road for the $500,000 TID grant that we received there. I will say that, um, the funding came from a mid-year offering, that Hamilton was the only community within the TID that was able to develop a project quick enough that would be eligible for that money, and as a result, we're, we have another $350,000 coming towards it. Are there any questions?
Oh, great. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Alan, will you remind us when this will occur? What's kind of the timing on the...
So, um, the construction should occur next year. Right now, both Dorana is working on their site plan for their expansion, and the city is working on the, um, engineering drawings. We have met with the Hamilton School District and with Hamilton Caster, who are the other two major stakeholders in this, and they were both, um, very receptive to the reconfiguration.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes care of the caucus agenda. I'll accept the motion that the committee of the whole be closed.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:57. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Ryan, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Certainly. Muller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And we're back into the regular meeting at 6:57. I'll accept the motion at this time regarding the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:58. We now go to the public hearing section of our agenda, and I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting be recessed, and public hearings take place.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Uh, the public hearings will now take place, 6:58. You want to read number seven?
Certainly, sir.
In the record, please.
We do have a public, uh, public hearing regarding a preliminary and final PD plan development proposal at 1,800 Princeton Road to allow a joint 911 facility and Butler County Corner facility, our property zone OPD office plan development, with five variances to the zoning ordinance. Olivia Weir, Bear Becker, applicant.
Okay. Uh, we did have someone sign the public speaking book to come address us. Commissioner Dixon, would you like to speak now?
For the record, Don Dixon, uh, public guide commissioner, 315 High Street. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to share with you, um, a short version of how, what our project is and what we anticipate. I have with me tonight, uh, full staff of the best designers I think that we could hire, and architects, to build these two facilities. Um, facility itself will cost about $25 million. Uh, we'll, it will, we'll have, uh, starting number of employees at 100. That should generate a little better than $100,000, I think, to the city council on your side. Uh, we're very excited to build this state-of-the-art 911 system, the dispatch centers, which we dispatch for maybe 50% on most of the county now, and eventually, one day, I think, we'll, we'll probably dispatch for the, the entire county, but that's, that's in, in the future. And we also have one of the latest and m- most, uh, the best-designed morgue, uh, that you can have. And, you know, we all hope we never get there, but I think we're probably all going to be there at one time or the other. But, um, we have got the, the people who, who have the state-of-the-art design capabilities of doing that, uh, kind of a facility, and we're very, very excited about that. Um, our building will be, uh, compatible with the design that's out there already with the board of elections and our other buildings. Uh, and I think you'll be very impressed and pleased when it's finished. It'd be very pleasing, and it'll be a great asset to the, you know, to the area. We've all made provisions to, um, allow for the construction of the connector that you want to build up to Hampshire and Princeton, so we're not interfering in that anyway. Uh, I think that, uh, we're talking about a water feature. I don't know if we're going to get that or not, are we? We are? Okay. So we have a water feature on the, on the front of when you're coming in, so it, it's going to be a, it's going to be a first, first-rate facility and design. So we really appreciate the city working with us. We've had a, uh, our staff has had a, a, a great recommendation of, of how positive the city was and receptive they were to work with us on this, although it does take some special out-of-the-box designing because some of them have to be, um, 911 facilities can't have a lot of windows, uh, and there's be the, the corner needs some specific in, in the 911 facilities for secure parking, uh, and those sorts of things. So I think we've taken all that into, into effect. Um, we're going to have mostly, it's going to be a mostly brick facilities, and, um, I, I think it's something that, you know, we can all be proud of, and I wanted to say thank you to the council and to the staff for being receptive and working with us to get this done, and we can't wait to break ground. We're pushing hard to break ground this year. Yeah, he will. He'll be more, he'll be, he'll be more energetic after we walk out of here. But anyway, everybody's ready to do it. Our coroner's here with us. Um, she's, um, she's been very helpful, and, and she will lead and has led the best, um, uh, facilities that we, we could possibly have here. This one will be state-of-the-art, though, uh, and, um, we just can't thank you enough, and we look forward to having approval to get it started, get it done, and have you out there for the groundbreaking and be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Muller.
Please.
Uh, Commissioner Dixon, what's, is there a plan for the existing, uh, properties? Uh, where the corner is now and the dispatch, is there, I'm asking the question up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I know you're...
I was looking around. I don't know who's talking. Uh, yeah. I knew it wasn't Joel.
No, not Joel. We'll keep him quiet. But, uh, is there a plan for the existing?
Well, the existing, the existing will be, uh, it'll be, um, interfaced into the new buildings.
Okay.
Where we are now, so that, that, that facility will stay. It won't look like that. It'll have a new facade, and the old morgue, it's just in a rental phase.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, uh, our landlords know that we're not going to be there long-term, and they've been very good to work with us, though, as we make this transition. So that's rental, and the other part is interfaced into the new buildings.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I can answer.
Thank you for the jobs and the investment.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard about this public hearing involving this, uh, proposal for Princeton Road, joint 911 facility and 911 facility and Butler County Corner facility? Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard about the facility just described? Okay, anyone in council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried a public hearing for, this one is closed at 7:04. We now go to gen item number eight, which is another public hearing.
Certainly, sir. A public hearing regarding amending the zoning district of properties of 20 High Street from DT1 High Street Form Base District to BPD, Mrs. Plan Development District, and plan development approval to allow a hotel and associated accessory and tenant uses. City of Hamilton, applicant.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving amending this zoning area, 20 High Street to Business Plan Development? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this, uh, public hearing involving 20 High Street and becoming a business planned development? Anyone in council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. Vice Mayor Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. That public hearing is closed at 7:06. We now go to agenda item number nine, which is our third public hearing.
Certainly, sir. A public hearing regarding a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, adopting the shaping of future of Hamilton's parks plan to the comprehensive plan. City of Hamilton, applicant.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard, this major amendment to Plan Hamilton involving our, uh, parks future? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving major amendment, amendment to Plan Hamilton involving our, uh, Hamilton Parks future? Anyone in council wish to be heard or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:06. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on the motion to reconvene.
Certainly, sir. Muller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
That motion carries.
We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and I'll accept the motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:07. I just want to say for the record, nobody did sign a public hearing book at all. So, for the record, nobody signed it. Okay, we now go into new legislation, and agenda item number 10, two readings of emergency ordinance involving purchase of a right-of-way and temporary construction easement.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of right-of-way and one temporary construction easement located at 25 South Erie Boulevard, ARCC 9 LLC, property owner, city of Hamilton purchaser, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Vice Mayor Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Muller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Second reading of emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of right-of-way and one temporary construction easement located at 25 South Erie Boulevard, ARCC 9 LLC, property owner, city of Hamilton purchaser, two readings, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion on this, uh, emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Muller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion adopted.
Motion adopted, uh, six-zero.
Right. Thank you. We now go to agenda item number 11, two readings and ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for the current expenses of the city for fiscal year ending in December 31st, 2024, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Muller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
An ordinance making a supplemental appropriations for current expenses of the city for fiscal year ending in December 31, 2024, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on a second. The motion, the rules were suspended. Passed at six-zero. Got the second reading already. So your motion is?
That the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Ryan. Any discussion on this ordinance involving supplemental appropriations? Hearing none, roll call, please, sir.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
We go to agenda item number 12. It's an emergency ordinance involving a union.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement with International Union of Operating Engineers to amend Schedule F of the city's classification and compensation plan to reassign the pay wages of utility plant relief operator, Class 1 license, utility plant relief operator, Class 2 license, utility plant relief operator, Class 3 license, water production crew leader and water production crew leader, Class 3, interchange the second and third shift differential rate, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Lauer. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
Great. Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
Certainly. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement with International Union of Operating Engineers to amend Schedule F of the city's classification and compensation plan to reassign the pay ranges for utility plant relief operator, Class 1 license, utility plant relief operator, Class 2 license, utility plant relief operator, Class 3 license, water production crew leader and water production crew leader, Class 3 license, interchange the second and third shift differential rate, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this particular emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 13, two readings of emergency ordinance involving a loan application to the Ohio EPA.
Certainly. An emergency ordinance authorizing directing and filing of a loan application to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agencies, OEP, Water Pollution Control Loan Fund for October 2024, loan distribution and directing the city manager to execute any documents required to secure said loan funding, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Moller. Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the filing of a loan application to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agencies, Water Pollution Control Loan Fund for October 2024, loan disbursement and directing the city manager to execute any documents required to secure said loan funding, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Ryan. Any comments, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 14, emergency ordinance, two readings on a sale and development agreement.
Certainly. An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyances and related actions with German Village Properties LLC regarding 826 Buckeye Street, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton seller, German Village Properties LLC purchaser, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please, sir.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyances and related actions with German Village Properties LLC regarding 826 Buckeye Street, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton seller, German Village Properties LLC purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Ryan. Comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab? Oh, sorry, Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, six-zero. It's a long list.
Listen, you've got a heck of an agenda to work on. I mean, what a first time.
Thank you.
First, okay, 15, agenda item number 15. First reading of an ordinance involving the quadracycles pilot program.
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending and supplementing Part III Traffic Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, by adding Chapter 350 Commercial Quadracycles Pilot Program relative to authorizing and regulating commercial quadracycles in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 16. First reading of an ordinance involving a sale and development agreement.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyance and related actions related to certain real property located at South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and High Street, City of Hamilton seller, Hamilton Hospitality, Inc. purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. Agenda item number 17, first reading of an ordinance involving real property located at 3040 Dixie Highway.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement for certain real property located at 3040 Dixie Highway, City of Hamilton, property owner, SKA Investments LLC purchaser, first reading.
You agenda item number 18, first reading of an ordinance involving 20 High Street and a right-ofway.
An ordinance dedicating 933 square foot portion of in-lots 243, 244, 245, and 246, 20 High Street, as right-of-way located at Market Street and High Street, Second Ward, City of Hamilton, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. Agenda item number 19, first reading of an ordinance involving 20 High Street and going to a business plan development district.
An ordinance amending the zoning district of properties 20 High Street from DT1 High Street Form Based District to BPD Business Plan Development District and preliminary and final PD Plan Development Approval to allow a hotel and associated accessory and tenant uses. City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
You agenda item number 20, first reading of an ordinance involving 20 High Street.
An ordinance vacating adjacent portions of right-of-way at 20 High Street situated in the Second Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio, to include the southern portion of Market Street right-of-way, the western portion of North Monument Avenue right-of-way, the west portion of Market Street right-of-way, west of the existing building and north of the High Street right-of-way, first reading.
Thank you. First, next one, number 21, first reading of an ordinance dedicating a right-of-way, Knightsbridge Drive, Central Avenue.
An ordinance dedicating a 4,149 square foot portion of lots 2481 and 2482 as right-of-way located at Knightsbridge Drive and Central Avenue situated in the Second Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Number 22, first reading of an ordinance involving another right-of-way.
An ordinance dedicating a 3,327 square foot portion of Outlet 19, 421 Dayton Street as right-of-way located at North Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard between Dayton Street and Butler Street situated in the Fourth Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. Agenda item number 23, first reading of an ordinance involving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton involving Hamilton's Parks.
An ordinance approving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, adopting the shaping of the future of Hamilton's Parks Plan to the comprehensive plan. City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
First reading of an ordinance, number 24, involving vacating some alleys in the Sixth Ward.
An ordinance vacating Benihoffin Avenue Alley B between Hooven Avenue and Clinton Avenue and Hooven Avenue Alley between Benihoffin Avenue Alleys A and B situated in the Sixth Ward, South Side, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton petitioner, first reading.
Agenda item number 25, first reading of an ordinance involving the joint 911 facility and Butler County Corner Facility.
An ordinance approving the preliminary and final PD Development Plan proposal at 1800 Princeton Road to allow a joint 911 facility and Butler County Corner Facility on property zone OPD, office plan development with five variances to the zoning ordinance. Olivia Ware Bearbecker applicant, first reading.
Thank you. As a record, reflect for this next reading of agenda item number 26, councilmember Lauer did leave council chambers. So it's the first reading of an ordinance involving real estate located at 1931 Logan Avenue.
Certainly, sir. An ordinance appropriating a temporary easement and a permanent easement and a simple fee interest in certain real estate located at 1931 Logan Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, M&amp;L Storage Facilities LLC, property owner, first reading.
Thank you. Okay. First reading of an ordinance, agenda item number 27, involving permanent utility easement on Benihoffin.
Certainly. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a permanent utility easement at 1950 Benihoffin Avenue located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, Fred House Jr., property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. Agenda item number 28, first reading of a resolution involving a grant application with the Ohio Department of Health.
A resolution authorizing, directing, ratifying, and supporting the filing of a grant application to the Ohio Department of Health Bureau of Infectious Diseases titled COVID-19 Enhanced Operations EO 23, reallocation and extension for a total award of $75,000 to be used by August 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Fear. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
That motion carries, six-zero.
We now go to agenda item number 29. It is a resolution also with the Ohio Department of Health.
A resolution authorizing, directing, ratifying, and supporting the acceptance of funds awarded under the Ohio Department of Health Bureau of Preparedness Health titled Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant in the total amount of $29,721.53 through a cooperative agreement with the Butler County General Health District for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025, and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to receive said grant funds, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Ryan. Any discussion on this resolution? Roll call vote, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Number 30, agenda item number 30, a resolution authorizing us to file a grant with ODOT for funding for the New London Road Southwest, South Washington Boulevard and the Elmwood Drive intersection.
Certainly, sir. A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application to the ODOT Safety Funding Program for the New London Road, South Washington Boulevard, Elmwood Drive Intersection Project and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the resolution be adopted?
Second. Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any discussion on this one? Roll call vote.
Muller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
That motion carries six zero.
Okay, we go to agenda item number 31, a resolution involving an agreement with WSSA Hamilton VA LLC.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area agreement with WSSA Hamilton VA LLC related to a project at 7215 Gateway Avenue, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Vaughn, second by council member Fear. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Muller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
That motion carries six zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 32. It's also a resolution and it involves acceptance of a $1 million grant for Riverside.
A resolution approving and ratifying acceptance of a $1 million grant from the state capital budget's one-time strategic community investment fund, SCIF, for the Riverside renovation project and approving and ratifying the execution of any and all documents by the city manager to receive said grant funds, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted?
Second. Councilmember Lauer, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any discussion on this one? Roll call vote.
Muller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
That motion carries six zero.
Go to agenda item number 33, a resolution involving a $1 million grant, state capital budget, and that's for Schuler-Benihoffin.
A resolution approving and ratifying acceptance of a $1 million grant from the state capital budget's one-time strategic community investment fund, SCIF, for the Schuler-Benihoffin Mixed Juice Renovation Project and approving and ratifying the execution of any and all documents by the city manager to receive said grant funds, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted?
Second. Vice Mayor Vaughn, second by council member Ryan. Any discussion? None, roll call vote, please.
Muller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Lauer.
Yes.
That motion carries six zero.
We go to agenda item number 34, a resolution involving some retention bonuses.
A resolution ratifying the application for and the acceptance of a grant from the State of Ohio Office of Budget and Management's, OHARPA, SLF, RFOHB-45, ambulance 2, Ohio Ambulance Impacted Industry Program for retention bonuses for all members of the Hamilton Fire Department and authorizing the execution of all related agreements and the distribution of and use of said grant funds, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted?
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by council member Vaughn. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Muller.